I'm sorry, I'm running this to this. But it's just so busy. You know, having one of those.
I don't know how to do that.
But it's so old. I used to go in and out. We're about to get out of our car. I'm saying we have to have a great work. Obviously, I guess. And, uh... You look like you're saying, "Oh, I don't know." Oh, it's so cool. It's so nice in your place. I mean, look at this. You know, you know. That's all? This is incredible. This is awesome. I'm trying to make it happen. I'm trying to make it perfect. Yeah? I'm gonna do the crew again. I don't know. You're fine. Good. I'm gonna get it. Let's start long. Yeah. Got the deal. That's it. You are. I still haven't done it.
You got a little bit of time. I figured it's about April.
I was gonna say, I really got... About my man.
That's about it.
Yeah.
What do you think of the IDI, you know?
You're having a side here. You're having a side here. Oh, yeah. There's a thing. There was a fight over here. She's got it. She's dead. Asking for it. Yeah. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, I mean them. This lady right here. I told her whatever she said. Don't believe them. What did she say?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What is it?
Yeah. I think she hanging in there.
You want a designated picture? Sure. Fuck. Okay. That's it.
Here we go. One, two, three, one, two, three.
Now, did you have Miss Rule?
Yeah.
She's a good friend of mine. She's a good friend of mine. In fact, the other day after we had talked, I'm picking up my boys from Steel and she's picking up her twins from Steel. Finally, after two years, I get to see you. Because usually it's her husband. Are you ready for us?
I'm ready. Well, I don't know if Mom's ready for my son.
I got a junior. I got one more.
Yeah, really, yeah.
I know. So, where are you listening?
My sister does the same thing.
Making you.
It's a Lexar.
What's it called?
Lexar.
And I clicked on it. So, what's the file call for the presentation?
Best. Two, that, yeah.
One of these?
Yeah. One is, uh, 2000 and, yeah, that...
Is that it? December?
No, unless you want to do the, um, that's...
The other one?
Yeah, that one's the two.
Is that it?
Yes. I just didn't know which version of PowerPoint would work the best.
Oh, okay.
I'm here, so...
All right. I feel better. You feel that way?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. How close is this?
You're gonna save it to the desktop?
Uh, do you want your... I can.
Yeah, they, normally, they do that.
I'm saying I need to take the person who's... You're ready, because I'm the pastor.
Oh, don't lose your...
My kids.
Oh, I'm going. You should have handled that with your sister.
Now, how you gonna give them the...
Perfect.
Can I give you your flash drive back?
Nope. That's on. I'll call this, uh, meeting to order. Everybody will...
They had a meeting.
Got a regular meeting tonight, so... Monday, December 5th, 2016. Want to welcome everyone. Um, had a very busy evening recognizing, uh, those folks with the Mayor's Award for Education. It was a great night. Uh, tonight, we have Jeffrey Pennington. I saw him right there. Smyrna First Baptist Church is gonna come forward, give her invocation, also allegiance in the place of the flag. So, everyone, please rise.
All right, well, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for tonight, and our hearts are just flooded with gratitude. We just thank you for the season. We thank you for the ways that you've so richly blessed us, not just individually, but with such a wonderful place to live. Father, I thank you for Smyrna. I thank you for the folks that make up this wonderful city council and for the leadership of our mayor, and just pray that you would just continue to bless them as they make such critical, important decisions each day. Lord, I just thank you for their service. And Lord, as we turn our gaze now to this Advent season, we are so thankful for the ways that you have worked in the past through your Son Jesus and through his resurrection, for how you're working in the present and how you have secured our future. And as we consider those things, may it just set the trajectory of our hearts and our thoughts this Christmas season. We thank you so much for this time. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Well, let's pledge allegiance to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item two is agenda changes, and we do not have any under the, uh, Merrill report. We've got one item. Whitfield Academy check presentation to Smyrna Police Explorers. Von Fennel, if you'll take care of that and introduce the better half of your life.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm looking for a representative of the Smyrna Police Department. Uh, short of that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Derek Norton to stand in and receive the check on behalf of the Smyrna Police Department as Chair of Public Safety. But, uh, Mrs. Fennel, if you would like to come forward, there's one of the representatives of the badged ones.
There's a couple of police officers back in the back, back there.
Yeah. I'm not sure he's authorized...
Oh, no, those are firemen.
I'm not sure he's authorized to get a check, so...
Believe me.
Mrs. Fennel, if you'll come forward to the microphone and explain to the, uh, to the viewing public the, uh, check and the rationale behind which you want to present it to the police department.
Be happy to. I believe Officer Defense might be out in the hallway, so...
Yes, he is.
Is he coming?
Our sons are out there, so he could be engaged with them in proper discipline, but...
May have been out there doing his job. He was out there protecting.
He's out there protecting, doing his job. Well, good evening. A great save. Okay, I think we have the requisite individuals here now.
Awesome.
Uh, on behalf of Whitfield Academy, I'm Cindy Fennel, Director of PR over at the school here in Smyrna, and we just want to thank the Smyrna Police Explorers program for supporting us, uh, over the football season this past fall. They came out and helped us with some parking and traffic management, and I think they learned a few things along the way, uh, in, in terms of police work and some of that public safety. So, we thank you for your service and hope you learned a lot, and, uh, we have a check for you, for your program, and I think this is to go towards some new uniforms, perhaps. So, I wanted to make this presentation to you of $500 from Whitfield Academy to the Police Explorers program, and we thank you for your help.
And wherever that camera is, I'll be happy to man it to get this requisite photo. Where's the camera?
It's in the back.
Okay. We'll get that quick photograph. Maybe somebody will assist you. There's a handsome young man back there with a badge on. He could probably... Somebody can help you as you...
It's okay. We can just do it.
Any comments from the...
That's right.
Floris?
We'll get a photo after the fact.
Oh, there's... Right. I said a handsome young man, and Richard, step forward. I, that...
I took it out of the envelope. Here you go.
Welcome to Smyrna. It's our No Parks and Rec Director. He's gonna fit right in.
Put it in the breach.
Great.
Lucy?
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your help and happy to...
Anything you want to say, Lucy, about that?
Yeah.
About the program or anything?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor and Council. Um, as you guys know, we have the Explorer Program for these young folks, where we're trying to basically teach them life skills. Um, we hope that they grow and develop after college and become Smyrna police officers. But at the core of what we're trying to teach these young people are life skills so that they can be, uh, positive functioning citizens. And we have with us tonight Jennifer and Jason. Jason is our post commander. He's very talkative, so I'll let him say one or two words about how he feels about the program.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Explorers has done a lot for me over the past few years. It's taught me several, several skills.
Pull that microphone up. I want to make sure the people at home can hear you.
Especially NPO Defense. He's taught me a lot of things that I can take throughout my life, especially pursuing my career in law enforcement. This cur... This Explorer Program has given me several opportunities that otherwise I would never have been able to achieve. I've been on several ride-alongs where I've learned from officers, different ways of policing, different tactics of how to handle different situations, and I think that it's set me better off to get a better understanding of the law enforcement career. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Great job. Great program, and thank you for your time, and thank the Smyrna Police Department for the ongoing efforts at every level to continue to involve our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Item four is department head reports. Mr., um...
Jones.
Jones. Okay. I got the Mr. part right. Mr. Jones.
That's the nicest thing you've said to me all day. Thank you, Mayor. There are three department head reports this evening. Uh, the first one will be from our Community Development Director, Mr. Ken Sudrith, and then that will be followed by our, uh, Fire Chief, Chief Akry, and then Keep Smyrna Beautiful, Ms., uh, Ann Kirk.
This will be a little bit different, uh, report tonight, because I'm just gonna talk about the studies that we have underway. Since we have, uh, four studies, I thought it'd be appropriate, uh, at the end of the year to sort of give you a status report. Just to remind everybody, we have a Georgia Tech study going on, the LCI Spring Road Corridor Study, the STP South Cobb Drive Corridor Study, as well as the Comprehensive... With regard to the, uh, Georgia Tech Study, that is a market analysis and land use study. It is oriented down towards Cobb Parkway, Spring Road, and, and the, uh, Braves Stadium area. The consultant team, obviously, consisted of Georgia Tech students, but also Noel Consulting. They are doing the market study part of, um, uh, the overall program there. They started in August. They will, um, have the final report in February. So, that includes the market study, uh, the fiscal analysis, as well as the report from the students as well. The study process, you can see here that the, um, it's a fairly aggressive timeline here. It started in September. There have been multiple meetings. Uh, we had a preliminary, uh, meeting back in September. They attended the, the Jonquill Festival, uh, to deal with a visual preference survey. Then there was a second presentation to staff. Then there was a Spring Road Open House. We had over 60 attendees. And then, um, just right before Thanksgiving was their third presentation to staff, uh, sort of the final draft report and input. The student part of this will be turned in actually this Friday, December 9th. Um, the final report will come to us after it's all, um, put together, all, all the other pieces. Uh, we'll have that in February of, uh, next year. Uh, the focus, uh, as I've already stated, is, is been that Spring Road, Cumberland Parkway Quadrant. Uh, the, the market study is really, um, trying to determine what the demand is going to be with regard to business and housing, uh, sectors, which we then can use to help anticipate growth in that particular corridor. Second study I, I mentioned had to do, uh, has to do with the Spring Road, uh, land use, uh, plan. Uh, again, that started in August. It'll be completed in March of next year. Uh, Sizmore Group, um, was the one who, who was selected. They have some sub, uh, subgroups, Assistant M Noel Consulting Group, and then the Nelson-Nigar Group. The Nelson-Nigar Group is the transportation. Noel Consulting is, uh, sort of the market analysis as well. Consultants are, uh, starting to wrap up that market, uh, land use and the transportation analysis now. With regard to their completed meetings, they did attend, um, the Jonquill Festival. They had over 100 participants actually come by and take surveys i- in the tent that was, uh, set up. They had a, uh, community meeting on November 1st, uh, again, over 60 participants there. Uh, upcoming, upcoming meetings or events that are left. We actually have stakeholder interviews this week, um, which would be December 7th and/or December 8th, uh, depending on which day people were scheduled. That is at Fire Station Number Three. Um, there is a design works, uh, workshop on December 8th as well, um, to begin developing those, uh, recommendations. Their next community, uh, slash public meeting will be the third meeting, uh, third week, excuse me, of January of next year. And, um, the community survey, uh, ended last Friday, and they had over six... We, we have received over 660 responses, which according to them is, uh, one of the highest numbers that they've ever received in, in a timeframe that was fairly short. Uh, the website, uh, information, uh, is on the screen, but it, you can always go to the city website, uh, and, and find out, uh, what's been placed up there. South Cobb, um, Corridor Study. Again, this was initiated, um, in September. It'll be completed also in March of next year. Um, Corps Engineering, uh, with some sub-partners of Strategic City Partners and, uh, Wilburn and Associates are assisting them. Um, the existing condition report has been completed, and, um, the future land use and transportation analysis are underway. Stakeholder interviews, um, are also being scheduled, uh, right now. Public input, uh, has been, uh, started and received. The completed meetings, uh, they did an event at, at Food Truck on September 27th. Uh, again, also attended the Jonquill Festival. Um, they've attended several other meetings, handing out surveys, um, at the Cumberland Transfer Station and the Marietta Transfer Center, all of that, uh, combination there. There is a public, uh, meeting at the Wolf Center, uh, and they also attended the Smyrna Area Council, handing out, uh, surveys as well. Uh, they made 200, over 250 contacts. Upcoming meetings, again, this Thursday, this week is sort of a popular week for all of our studies. Um, they, there is a night meeting, uh, from 6:30 to 8:30. Uh, that's more of a neighborhood design meeting, and there is a open house planned for February of next year, and again, the study be completed in March. With regard to the comprehensive plan, remember, we are updating an existing plan. This is the required 10-year update of our 2030 plan. Um, and it must be completed by October of next year. Uh, the city chose Jacobs, uh, with, again, sub, uh, groups of Market Street Services assisting them, uh, with the study. Actually, that study, again, is also starting this week. Uh, again, a very busy week for staff. Uh, the plan will follow all the minimum requirements, uh, of the state and then some, but the state requires visioning and goal, um, setting, uh, land use, transportation, housing, and economic development. All of those have to be addressed. The comp plan is also gonna tie in all the other studies that we've talked about, the three, uh, other ones into one strategic document as well. And, um, again, we'll go through the community participation, uh, aspect and, and use stakeholders, community meetings, surveys, and other data collection, uh, methods. Um, and then we will bring that to, you know, council will be involved, but we will have multiple public hearings prior to the adoption of council. And again, um, we'll get it, uh, to a point, then we have to send it to ARC. They will send it back to us, and then we will have it adopted, uh, again, in October of next year. So, summary is the Georgia Tech Study is, will be completed in February of next year. Spring Road and South Cobb will be both completed in March of next year, with the comp plan, uh, completed in October of next year. I know that was rather quick, but I hope it was succeed enough to, to get the point across. I'm happy to answer any question. Actually see it...
Yes.
On your screen.
Yes.
On that. So, happy to answer any questions on that.
Ken, you mentioned on the website, if a person were looking on the website, where would they go to capture?
On the main page.
On the main page.
Uh, it'll, it'll be referenced either way. Uh, there'll be something about South Cobb or, um, uh, Spring Road, uh, on that, and, and they'll be able to, uh, to link through all that.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, next, we have our, uh, Fire Chief. Chief Akry is gonna come up and give us a report on the, uh, the status of our Fire Department. And Chief, I hope you'll, uh, you'll, you'll mention the extracurricular activities that, uh, the Fire Department was involved in in North Georgia.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Um, well, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations on another successful, uh, education awards ceremony. It's always cool to see the successes and, and the, the excellence acknowledged within our local schools, so congratulations on that. Before I forget, as, as Mr. Jones just said, I'll, I'll kind of go off topic a little bit. As we're all aware, um, if we've turned on a TV or radio or looked at our phone in the last couple of months, we've seen, uh, what's going on in North Georgia, Western North Carolina, Eastern Tennessee, with 40-plus at, at a high point of, of uncontrolled wildfires. We were requested, we, the City of Smyrna, were requested to, um, provide some resources along with other metro Atlanta agencies, and we were able to fill that resource request with, um, with a crew and a, a fire apparatus to, um, go up to Towns County, and our crews were tasked for five days with 911 response in Young Harris and High Wasey, and of course, they did an excellent, excellent job. Uh, went up one day to, to check on the crew and talk to the incident commanders that, that were handling the wildfires up on the top of the, the mountains, and they asked me to pass along their great appreciation to the citizens of Smyrna, to this elected body, for allowing us to, to go out and, and help out some of our neighbors. So, uh, thank you for that on their behalf. It's been a busy, um, fourth quarter for us, uh, I think for everybody, but, um, since we last spoke, we have, uh, graduated another successful citizen emergency response team, uh, training, which is a little bit different from our Citizen Fire Academy in that it's a pretty comprehensive nine-week, uh, course, free to Smyrna citizens, um, to come in and, and learn, um, a few details about how they and their neighbors can, can be a little bit better prepared and a little bit more resilient. We love doing that. We have a lot of time, a, a, a fun time doing that. We intend to do that again in the first quarter of 2017. We've also had three pretty significant retirements, three, uh, long-term, uh, people who have retired from the Smyrna Fire Department with 30-plus years of service each, so we congratulate them on a successful career and, and long years of service to the citizens of Smyrna. Um, at the same time, on the, the flip side of that coin, we have, uh, of seven new recruit graduates that are now completely trained and on shift, uh, as of today, so we're, we're excited to have them onboard as well. Smyrna Public Safety Foundation has sponsored the annual Public Safety Awards Banquet. Now, that's a, a great partnership between all of public safety, both police and fire and the City of Smyrna, and that, um, Public Safety nonprofit, and we're very appreciative for what they do in this event. They recognize excellence through an awards banquet for public safety, and on the Fire Department's side, happy to say that firefighter Tevin Sims was named Rookie of the Year, and engineer Jacob Bauer was named Firefighter of the Year, and great, great accomplishments of those two, um, along with other personnel and other engine companies receiving awards and accolades. We're just so very proud, not only to have the support of, of our community through the Public Safety Foundation, but also in the recognition of the absolute excellence that is the men and women that work for the City of Smyrna, uh, Fire Department. Um, we had a little severe weather event last Wednesday. If you were in or around the City of Smyrna, you may have heard the, um, outdoor warning sirens go off. And I wanted to take a minute to, to just talk about that as a reminder. Across our nation, those severe weather warning sirens are only designed and intended to alert people who may happen to be outdoors, that it's not safe to be outdoors, to go inside, seek shelter, try, and try to find out what's going on. Turn on the news, turn on a radio, get on the computer, try to find out what's going on. Now, while it is true that we're very fortunate in the City of Smyrna, we have 10 severe weather warning sirens, and the fact is that the majority of people throughout the city can, in fact, hear those sirens if they're indoors, but if you cannot, um, it's because there's just no way that we could design a system that where everybody, no matter how deep inside of a structure they are, they could hear those sirens. So, that's what they're for, and because not every single person can hear those sirens when we go off, and it's impossible, in fact, for us to do that, we encourage people to have multiple ways by which they could be alerted in the event that a threat were to happen in your area. And there are simple things, and, and most of them are free. We encourage people to download a number of free, um, apps that you can get, severe weather alert apps on your phones. Most of us have smartphones. Also, we encourage people to have a, a weather alert radio handy in their home or place of business so that you can have multiple ways that you can be, uh, warned in the event that you need to be. This Friday is the 16th Annual Shop with a Hero Program. That's the program where all of public safety, police and fire in the City of Smyrna, in partnership with the Public Safety Foundation here in Smyrna, um, we take kids from local area elementary schools, and we, we, we take them Christmas shopping, and we let them, we feed them lunch, and, and we even introduce them and let them talk to Santa before we take them back to school. I've been told that this year, we will be hosting 80 kids, so that'll be a record for us, um, this year, and we're super excited. That's this Friday. We're gonna finish up in the community center. I know that there's also an employee luncheon at the same time, but it's a good opportunity to stop by. We'll have all of the kids, all the counselors there in the community center. They'll be there eating lunch. They'll be there happy, uh, waiting their turn to go talk to Santa, so if you have an opportunity, I encourage you and welcome you to come by and, and be a part of that. And I'll close with, with the fact that Christmas is just a few weeks away. Um, I'm the Fire Chief. I'm kind of a safety person, so I would be remiss if I did not remind everybody, just a few simple tips. A lot of people like to have live trees, uh, inside their house. I'm one of them. Um, if you do, please, uh, try to be mindful of where you place the tree. Keep it far away from any heat source. And also, people like to keep the trees around because they smell good inside the house. The problem is, if you keep it up after Christmas for too long, it gets really, really dry, and that's when the danger really exists. So, we encourage people to, to try to dispose of the trees, take them out of the house as soon as they can after the Christmas, Christmas holidays. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, finally, we have, uh, Ann Kirk with our, uh, Keep Smyrna Beautiful program.
She's gonna tell us what to do with those Christmas trees. I didn't even got mine up. You're already picking it up.
Yeah. The, uh, control?
Garrity of Ward Five. She's, uh, going to be a terrific appointment. We're very excited to have her, and we're very thrilled with the reappointment of Nell Robinson and Holly Elmdorf. We are delighted that they have agreed to stay on with us. Our Rivers Alive, we've had a really, really busy fall. Uh, the first thing we had in October was Rivers Alive. It was at the Paces Mill National Recre... We, but for Garrity of Award Five, she's going to be a terrific appointment. We're very excited to have her and we're very thrilled with the reappointment of Nell Robinson and Holly Elmdorf. We are delighted that they have agreed to stay on with us. Our Rivers Alive, we've had a really, really busy fall. The first thing we had in October was Rivers Alive. It was at the Paces Mill National Recreation Center on the, it's of the United States Park Service on Highway 41. That part of the park receives the water from the east side of Atlanta Road. Atlanta Road is actually the great continental divide for Smyrna. The water on the left side goes to Nickajack and that tributary. So we go and clean up this area so we can teach people exactly how much of our trash ends up getting into our waterways. We had 60 volunteers who gave 20, 214 hours. 63 bags of trash were collected and that does not include the one quarter of a car, which was the heavier part of the front end of the car. And that is laying on the ground there in front of those volunteers, plus several tires and some other large debris pieces. It was amazing to me that they could get that out of the water. We had a shredding event on October the 8th at the Wolf Center. We had 236 cars come through. We collected 10,000 pounds of paper and two cubic yards of cardboard boxes. We will be having another one because we're already getting calls. We are scheduling another one for March. We usually do this twice a year. We're kind of at the mercy of the service providers on these, but we will try to let you know as soon as we can about that new, next event. On the third weekend in October, we had our Adopt a Mile cleanup. We had 98 volunteers from 19 different groups. They cleaned 22 miles and collected 71 bags of debris and trash. We want to welcome our newest members, Findings Mortgage, who are taking Spring Road eastbound from Campbell Road until Cobb Parkway. And then the high school, Campbell High School Earth Club is taking Fleming Street and the Campbell High School Football Stadium parking area, which as you know, is always a problem. So we're really happy to have that adopted. America Recycles Day was on November the 12th. That was at the Smyrna Recycling Center at, on Lake Drive. We want to remind people, that was our recycling appreciation day, but we want to remind people that we have lots of services that help during the holidays. We take your old holiday lights. We will take your cooking oil, your used electronics that you're getting replaced as holiday gifts. We have a kidney fund truck there that will take cast off, used things that you're getting replacements for. When you get your brand new shiny stuff, bring us the old stuff. And we always take glass, paper, metals and cardboard and plastics. Our Smyrna Community Garden was recognized as the best of 2016 by Atlanta Home Improvements Magazine. We're currently taking leases for that now. If you would like to get on the waiting list for a plot, please contact our office. This is the time that we turn over the plots and there's a good opportunity for you to get the one that you would like. Our upcoming events, we're Bring Run for the Chipper. This is one of Mayor Bacon's favorites. We will have that at the Home Depot on January the 7th. And as a new policy last year, and we were kind of blindsided by this, Home Depot had big signs to put out the next day saying, "We will no longer accept trees." So if you plan on bringing your tree to the Home Depot to recycle it, please get it there before January the 7th, on or before January the 7th. On January 7th, we will have volunteers there from 9 until 4 to unload your car. It's a pretty quick drive-through event and we have free seedlings and free seeds for the first, first come, first served for those that want them. And no wreaths and no garlands, and please take the lights off of the trees. And one of the most heartbreaking things that happens though is we often find, every year we find at least one or two keepsake ornaments that are left. And we have no way to identify these folks and get those handmade children's ornaments or pictures back to them. And we know that, that they're missing them the next year. So be very careful. Get your tree totally naked and bring it to us. Upcoming events also, Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. We are planning that now. If you have a project that you think needs to be done in our community, please contact our office. And this can include also our departments. If you have something that you would like to get done that you haven't been able to, to get worked into your schedule, we will have volunteers. This is a time of the year that a lot of people in Smyrna like to give back to their community. So we would like to give them a good opportunity to help out. We know that we will have a project at Smyrna Elementary and possibly at a couple of other elementary schools, but please let us know if you are interested in helping. Another upcoming event is our January 21st Adopt a Mile. We started an hour later in January because of the time change and also because of the cold weather. We do not go out until it is over 35 degrees for health reasons. And we will have a weather event date the next weekend, should we need to postpone it until then. And that would be January the 28th. And as you can see, these students, this was January of last year and there's a kid out there in shorts. And we're very happy to say that we, we were presented on last Friday with the Keep Georgia Beautiful First Place Award for our programming for FY 2016. And that's a result of the support we get from the city and the departments, as well as the community and all the volunteers that we have. So we're really, really proud of that. We want to thank all of our Adopt a Mile groups, the Campbell High School DECA Club, who made our shredding day just a wonderful event, Kennesaw State Volunteers, who come in droves to help us out. We are, we have a wonderful working relationship with them. Light of the World Church, who brought 20-some volunteers out to the Rivers Alive. Also, Atlanta Outdoor Club, who had a big hike that morning and then stayed on to help us out. The U.S. National Park Service, Keep Marietta Beautiful, and the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board and community volunteers. And last but not least, here's our contact information. My number is 770-431-2863. And the email address is available on the city website as well as through our office. Thanks very much and I appreciate the time. We are also have, we've been notified that we have some good news from KAB National Awards, but we're not allowed to divulge that at this time, so.
You can't announce, make the announcement right now?
I cannot. I'm sorry.
I can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor, that concludes the department head reports for this month.
Okay. I just don't know. Thank you. Adam Fives Land Issue Zonings and Annexation, A 2016-375 Public Hearing Zoning Request, Rezoning Z16017, Rezoning from Neighborhood NS to General Commercial Conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acres, Land Lot 446 Belmont Circle, Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is a property that's affected by the Wendy Hill Road project and as such, this, this, this building and its, its associated businesses are proposing to relocate. Two of those businesses, Farming and Dentist Office specifically, well, the Dentist Office is not identified use under our permits for Section 711 of our zoning ordinance, so it has to be rezoned from neighborhood shopping to a general commercial zoning. This was approved by the P and Z Board on September 12th and has subsequently been tabled a couple of times by this body to today's meeting. Community Development is, the department is recommending approval of the rezoning from NS to G C Conditional. And Rusty is here if you have any specific questions.
Is applicant here? Okay. This, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? He can have a seat and then this is in Mrs. Wilkinson's district and I'll turn it over to her for Rusty's presentation probably.
All right.
Thank you, Rusty.
Mr. Jones did a great job of summarizing the request. I'll give you a little bit more background information and orient you towards what the, what the site looked like and the building. Taken track, it's located on Belmont Circle, just one property to the north of Wendy Hill. The applicant is proposing to build a 5,000-square-foot building with a 2,500-square-foot building footprint. It is a two-story building with retail and office on the, on the bottom floor and office space on, on the top floor. The proposed uses for the building are retail, pharmacy and some dentist and clinic uses. Subject property has a neighborhood activity, land use designation on the future development map. That designation will not change with this rezoning. As you can see, all the properties along Wendy Hill have a neighborhood activity center land use designation as well. And then the properties to the north have suburban residential land use designation. Here's the proposed site plan. The applicant did a, did a great job of trying to minimize all the, the variance requests along with this. For the most part, it is, it is designed in accordance with the, the city's zoning ordinance. There are two variance requests that are associated with that and we'll get into those in a minute. He is proposing basically a 40-foot front setback, a 15-foot side setback and a 50-foot rear setback. Those are the minimum requirements of the, of the zoning ordinance. That is the proposed location of the detention facility. He is requesting a landscape easement reduction from 15 feet down to seven feet. And the second variance is the orientation of the, of the parking spaces. The Wendy Hill corridor design district requires the, that they be oriented perpendicular to the building and obviously these are, are the, the aisles be oriented perpendicularly and this is parallel. So with that being said, staff recommend is supportive of both those requested variances. Here's the proposed building elevations. This was the reason the, the item was tabled for the last two meetings. He's gone back, redesigned the building and added more architectural features. Here's a picture of the subject property. And then the adjacent commercial properties. Community Development recommends approval of proposed zoning from neighborhood shopping to general commercial for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building with the following conditions. Number one, the composition of the commercial buildings and the development shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited, brick, stone, stucco and shake. And no elevation shall be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. Number two, all utilities shall be underground. Number three, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number four, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number five, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number six, all landscape plans must be prepared by a registered landscape architect. Number seven, all yards and common areas are to be sodded and landscaped as appropriate. Number eight, the dumpsters shall be enclosed with a minimum of six-foot high enclosure and that shall match the architectural style of the building. Number nine, the applicant shall comply with the city's current sign ordinance. Number 10, the developer shall provide a walkway connecting the sidewalk to the building and the crosswalk shall either be brick pavers or stamped concrete. Number 11, our list of prohibited uses and they include automobile sales, repair, automobile wash services, boarding and breeding kennels, dry cleaning plants, adult novelty stores, pawn shops, check cashing stores, pool halls, arcades, service stations, coin-operated laundry, compost facilities, funeral homes, group homes, shelter for the homeless or tattoo parlors, along with truck rentals and sales, service and repairs, motorcycle sales, service and repairs, tiles, or tire sales and services, taxi stands, self-storage facilities and massage parlors. Stipulation number 12 binds the approval of the, of the rezoning to the site plan submitted. And 13 binds the approval of the zoning to the, the renderings provided in the, in the rezoning. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No, I think you did a good job explaining it. Thank you, Rusty. And I wonder if the applicant would like to come up and say anything about the businesses and the build, or the building? Would you like to? Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Martin. He has been doing a very good job assisting me and getting things rolling. And well, I'm the owner of the, the route building adjacent to the open land here and the city of Smyrna very soon will take over and buy the property. That's why I have to move a little bit from where I am to the next open land. And it is, it is an open land, so I like to build a nice new building so that the area will look better and we can move some professional businesses from where we are to the, to next door. And, and they are mainly professional people, just all, all of them are four doctors, basically two dentists, a medical doctor and a pharmacist. And it is going to, going to be a nice building because it's a brand new and it's well-designed. The neighborhood will look good and basically I comply with almost all of the, what Mr. Martin requires me. Even though I am doing that, I'm losing, losing some hair here, but I, I try to comply with, with that as much as I can. And, and with a new building and it's going to help the city of Smyrna in terms of businesses and a little bit poquito of taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and thank you so much for, you know, how hard you've worked on this plan with the city and everything. I really appreciate it.
I thank you very much for all of your work and I, I've been around so into many areas and the city of Smyrna is really, really impressed me and since you have been doing a great job, especially of Mr. Martin.
Thank you. We're glad you're here and we're glad, we're working it out so that your businesses that are currently in that building can stay in our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So is there any other questions? Okay. Well, I would like to move to make the motion to approve item 4A 2016-375, the zoning request for Z16-2, dash 017, rezoning from neighborhood shopping to general commercial conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acres, dash Land Lot 446 Belmont Circle, Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation.
Second.
I have motioned a second to approve this zoning request with those stipulations. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you. Adam 6 is privy. 485, it's a public hearing, privy license request, 2016-485, beer, wine, liquor pouring, 2453 Cobb Parkway Rodney Sofu and Grill with. beer, wine, liquor pouring, 2453 Cobb Parkway Rodney Soul Food and Grill with Marvin Rodney as the agent. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, Mr. Rodney will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at this reference location. He's been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and has attended the mandatory awareness workshop. I believe the copy of that certificate is attached near backup. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department has failed to reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of this license, and approval of the privileged license is a recommendation of staff.
Is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license? Let the record show there is none. Mr. Cochran will, Mr. DeOft. This is Mr. Derek Norton's district. Mr. Norton.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You're located right over behind the Olive Garden, correct, or right over in that shopping center?
Yes, sir. That would be our new location. Our previous location was next to the Fortis College, right in the shopping center where, I'm sorry, nervous, right in the shopping center where Fortis Colleges, I Love Sushi, right in the corner of Wendy and Cobb Parkway. But if you guys noticed, that building is completely demolished. They put in an Accra dealership, so that's forced us to move, and we, you know, we're really happy for the new location. It's very convenient.
Very good. Well, liquor license is something we take very seriously in Smyrna. I just want to have you state for the record, you have satisfied all of the requirements, gone through the training?
Yes, I did, sir.
Okay, and you're aware that the Smyrna Police Department conducts occasional sting operations to make sure that everybody's in compliance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I don't have any other further questions. I, I want to thank you for doing business in Smyrna, and particularly in Ward 1, and any of my colleagues have any questions?
You're, were Lee Geller's used to be the jewelry store?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what kind of soul food.
It's Jamaican, it's Jamaican soul food intertwined with Jamaican flavor intertwined, the fusion with the soul food, to do the spiciness with the southern food that makes a great flavor.
When are you looking to open?
We're looking to open sometime in December, late December. Hopefully, we get all the inspection passed and everything up to date.
You know Thompson Brothers is right down in the corner down there, got the best collard greens in town, so.
I wanted to give that run for their money. Thank you.
They don't have jerk chicken, do they?
I know they don't. And we got some good access, too, don't forget.
Well, if there, there's no other questions, I'd like to move to approve item 6A, privileged license request, 2016 dash 485, beer, wine, liquor pouring, 2453 Cobb Parkway Rodney Soul Food and Grill with Marvel Rodney as the agent.
Thank you.
Motion second to approve this request. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item 7, that's 500, approval for the reappointment of Joel Powell to the planning of his own board for a two-year term that expires 12/31/2018. Someone make that motion, since that's my call.
Move approval.
Motion second to reappoint Joel Powell. Any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. I'm thinking Jordy's done an outstanding job on that board. Item B is 20, the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Holly Elmandorf, this is a two-year term, 20, it expires December 2018. Mr. Derek Norton.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Holly actually replaced me on the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board when I was elected to council, and she's done a fantastic job, and it's my pleasure to recommend her for reappointment. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7B, 2016 dash 490, approval of Ward 1 reappointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Holly Elmandorf, a two-year term to expire December 2018.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item 7C, under formal business, 2016 502, to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Nell Robinson, this is a two-year term that expires December of 2018. Mr. Doug Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to reappoint Nell Robinson. She has served many years and has done a great job from everything I've heard and talked with, the folks who have served with her on that board, and at this moment, I'd like to make a motion for 2016 dash 502, approval of Ward 6 reappointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board of Nell Robinson. This is a two-year term to expire December 2018.
Second.
Motion second to re- all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Is, commercial building permits? We have none. Item 9 is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir. There are five items for your consideration this evening on the consent agenda. The first one is approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes for November 21st, 2016. Second item is approval of pre-council meeting minutes for November 21st, 2016. The third item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for November 17th, 2016. The fourth item is approval of award RFP 17014 for the community center audio/video project to LMI Systems, Inc., in the amount of $75,067. And the final item is approval to use council chambers for a town hall meeting for the South Cobb Drive Corridor Study to be held on Thursday, December 8th, 2016, from 6:30 to 8:30. This is the item referenced by Mr. Sudrith in his report.
You must approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 10 is, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item I just want to mention. The Cobb Municipal Association will hold its annual meeting next week on December 13th. I want to thank a couple of members of our team, Terry Graham and Christie Almond, for helping us out in the community center. And Smyrna is the location of this year's annual event. We have it catered by Porchlight Latin Kitchen, so Smyrna will be the host for our annual municipal officials' gathering. That's the end of my report, sir.
Just want to congratulate Ron. He just completed his two-year term as SBA president, did an outstanding job, and I know you're glad to let that go, I guess. A lot of time he's spending. Mr. Doug Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a committee report, but I do want to make a comment concerning some issues in Forest Hills that's come to my attention. Just so everyone knows, there is a potential development coming into the neighborhood, but no one has actually come to community development in the sense of any type of application. I refer to Paramount Realty Group. They have put up a sign saying "New Homes," and I just want everyone to know that obviously we'll be prepared, our community development department and myself, as that potential project comes forward, if they do even ask for rezoning. Just understand, this is a seven, about seven acres that's looking at being redeveloped over on Pine Tree Drive, but I've had several comments, or calls coming in, concerned because they've seen the signage that we've approved this. That is not the case, and I just want to make that clear to everybody in the Forest Hills neighborhood. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to invite the citizens to the meeting on Thursday night here in the council chambers from 6:30 to 8:30. It's, is covering the South Cobb Corridor Study, and we'll have some updates and a presentation on that study, and also an opportunity for the citizens to ask questions and, and give their input. And so that's, I'd love to see people come to that if they're interested, and then also I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the city employees and the volunteers, the employees from the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, for a wonderful tree lighting this past Tuesday night. It was very well-attended and beautiful, as always. I've been going to that event ever since they started, and even before I had children, and I think it's a really special event. And I also want to thank all the choirs that performed, all the children from all the different elementary schools, as well as some adult choirs, and the, the, also some choirs from some of the churches, but they did a wonderful job, and they made that event very special. And so thank our new Parks and Rec Director, too, for getting involved in that and jumping in. It was wonderful.
Well, he didn't have anything to do with it. He just got on, he just got off the bus.
Yes.
And he's going like, "Thank you."
Yeah, it was, was really good. So, and also, in this season, I was thinking about this just yesterday, I guess at church, and with following Thanksgiving and coming up with the Christmas holidays, and thinking about what I'm thankful for, and there's a lot of things that I'm thankful for, but one of the things I want to say from the bottom of my heart, that I've, I'm thankful for all the people that I've met while serving in this position as a council representative. I've met a lot of wonderful people and, and made a lot of good relationships, and I am, I was thinking, I'm really grateful for that, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Susan, Pocky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably the most important announcement I will have all year. Santa Claus is in town. This year, December the 2nd through the 18th, Fridays and Friday through Sunday, and December the 21st and the 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Aunt Fanny's Cabin, right across the street from the village here, Santa Claus will be greeting children. It's put on by the city and the Smart Optimist Club. Donations only, but we appreciate anybody that wants to come and see Santa, and I was there last night, and the kids thoroughly enjoy him, and so bring your children out and come see him.
Is there a possibility that Santa might be in this building tonight?
Santa may be here tonight. Really?
I heard he might be here. Terry, Terry Nullwich.
I heard that when it rains, elves don't always move and change their spot in the house, because it's hard when it rains. That's what I tell people at my house. That's what I heard. Tooth Fairy also has a hard time coming when it rains. It makes her wings wet, weighs her down. It's very dangerous. You just better wait until it's dry. But the Home for the Holidays was a fantastic celebration, and it was mostly dry, which was wonderful, and it, it, it was mild, and it was nice. It's, it's, I was, I was telling our new Parks Director, Richard Garland, that is, the Home for the Holidays really is peak Smyrna. It's when you have just a lot of people coming together to celebrate a fantastic season, and it was, it's really nice. And the lights look fantastic. Public Works and Parks, they've all just come together to do a really phenomenal job of bringing the holiday spirit to Smyrna, and that is a great thing, and well done, everyone, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Brewstein.
I'm very grateful that we have some rain because we desperately needed it, but then this next thing I'm grateful for about the rain is that they can't pave. Paving on, on Spring Road had gotten to be where it was just a contest, and oh, if you were going to make a block or not, not make a block. But anyway, I know that it'll be back soon, but for now, I'm very grateful for the rain. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, but I do have one comment on Spring Road.
It looks good.
It, it does look good, and it, I've been assured that as the medians are put in, that there will always be two lanes in each direction open, so it will not go down to one lane anymore. Just wanted to report that, and hopefully it'll be done soon.
I don't know if I'd have said that.
Hey, hey, I'm just passing along what I was told.
That is my experience. It was horrible.
I need to talk to you about saying stuff like that. Mr. Mike Jones, anything? Scott Cochran, city attorney. Terry, Heather, you got anything over there? You've been awful quiet tonight. That's good, though. No one signed up for citizens' input, so we don't have any, we don't have a, we don't have anything as far as a show conversation, so if there's no other business, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8 o'clock. All right, let's see here, what have I got? Oh, Ken, I got something for you.